What they gonna do? So I don't know, this one is.
We good? Good Erica?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have anybody? Joining us online that we need to wait for on virtually? We're good? Alright. Follow the roll please.
Here. Vice Mayor Santin?
Here.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Here.
Councilman Fahad?
Here.
Councilman Vasquez?
Here.
There is a quorum present, okay?
We ask those of you that can to rise please for the invocation. Our Heavenly Father, you were known by many names and worshipped in many ways. We ask for your blessings for all that are gathered here tonight in our beloved Miami Springs. Remind those of us on the council that we are not only leaders of our community, but also servants with the responsibility to consider and serve the common good of all. We ask for the wisdom and courage to speak out when it is time to speak out, to listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen, and to make decisions based on what we know to be right and good. May we always be guided by the spirit of justice and the spirit of love for our community. Amen. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our June 12th meeting. It's nice to see so many people in the audience and welcome to those that are joining us virtually. We'll get started for awards and presentations. And our first item is for a swearing and ceremony for Police Officer Gustavo Miranda by our Police Chief Guzman.
Thank you Mayor. I'd like to introduce the newest member of the Miami Springs Police Department, Gustavo Miranda Jr. Gustavo is a homegrown here from Miami Springs. Although he's from Miami Springs, he attended Miami Senior High School. But that's because his dad Gustavo Senior works at the school and they brought him over to play baseball, I believe. Is that correct? He pursued, he went on to pursue his AA degree at Miami Dade College, also playing baseball there. He grew up at home with his dad Gustavo Senior, his mom Elizabeth, and his sister Rebecca. He went through the academy and for all of you, for those of you that travel across the bridge, I'd stay away from Hialeah for a while because we snatched him from Hialeah Police Department. But anyway, to that said, Gus is an avid baseball player. He played baseball little league with a group that his parents formed, I believe it's the Romer? Romer did I, Romer Baseball Academy, which is a little league here around the Springs. And he continued playing at the rec center. He started working for Miami Springs at the rec center as a recreational council leader and then a field maintenance crew. And then he followed his dream of joining, going through the police academy. And now he's with us here at Miami Springs Police Department. So Gus, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Gustavo Miranda Jr. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same to uphold and enforce the laws of the United States, the state of Florida, the county of Miami Dade, and the city of Miami Springs. I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservations or purposes of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of police officer of the city of Miami Springs to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. So his girlfriend Adi, my executive assistant, my administrative assistant, will be putting the badge on for him. Mom, Dad, family would like to come up for some pictures, please join us. But with that said, I want to acknowledge that you're here and I want to thank you for you being here with us. We also have some of his friends.
Lana?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
That's what I call support.
Well Gus, your first thing tonight, you gotta take them all out to dinner on you. To the family and friends that are here, I want to say that this support is something that is incredibly important because he's here because of you. The way he was brought up, the way he was raised. We threw a lot of applications and only a few make it to this position. So thank you, welcome to the Miami Springs Police Family. Welcome Gus, I also members of his academy class here that graduated with him. We also have our next Police Officer Stephen Torres, who will be graduating September 1st from the academy. We also have members from the Hialeah Police Department that were from your graduating class and some of our officers from a shift that always comes to support, you know, our new officers. So I wish you nothing but a great career. I've been doing this for a long time and if I had to do it all over again, I definitely would do it the same way. It's extremely rewarding. You get in, you get out of it what you put into it and never underestimate your ability to affect somebody's life in a positive manner. Something that may be small and insignificant to you may be incredibly big for somebody out there that really needs it. So congratulations again and welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Here's on him, family, okay?
Officer Miranda, on behalf of our community, I wanted to thank you for serving and protecting us. And I wanted to mention that in addition to what Chief Guzman was saying about never underestimate what you do, the power of what you do, how it helps others, even in small ways. You're also a role model. All of the members of our police department, whether they realize it or not, are role models for our community and our youth. So thank you again for serving and protecting us.
Gus, I think I'm gonna say something. Obviously, nothing better than having a homegrown person that grew up here and you probably don't remember me. That's how time flies, but it's always a little kid and I'll see your family here and I can't believe it that you're here grown man, definitely gonna do our community good. So I'm proud to have known you when you were a lot younger. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Okay, next on our agenda is James Fulton of the Optimist Club. And James wears a lot of hats, including scouts. The hat of the Optimist Club. And well, I'll let you introduce the young lady.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman. Tammy, good evening. I would like to take the opportunity to introduce Ms. Janessa Montella. And she is our Oratorical Contest. She did her application for the Oratorical Contest for the Optimists International and for our region was the runner-up. And I would like to turn it over to her. She would like to present her Oratorical Contest. So come on up.
Welcome Janessa.
Discovering the optimism within me. Princess and the Frog, a Disney movie released on December 11, 2009. Includes characters that range from a small frog with big dreams of becoming a chef to a giant alligator with big dreams of playing in a jazz band. And forever a movie that has changed my life. Tiana dreamed of owning her own restaurant, a place where she could bring families together for over their love for food. She worked hard every single day at the diner and she would save up every penny she earned so that she could make her dreams come true. People doubted her though, told her to stop dreaming, to keep her head out of the clouds and be realistic. And you know what Tiana did? She ignored every single negative comment that came out of their mouths. She kept working hard despite the obstacles that were put in her way because she used her optimism to remind herself that no one else's opinion mattered. This is what she sings in one of her most well-known songs, Almost There. People down here think I'm crazy, but I don't care. Trials and tribulations, I've had my share. There ain't nothing gonna stop me now cuz I'm almost there. I took inspiration from this song to discover the optimism within me. One day, I was sitting at lunch with my two best friends and we started discussing what midterm exams we were planning to exempt and which ones we were taking. They both mentioned what midterms they were going to take and then it came to me. I told them that I was going to take four midterms, including my pre-calculus one. Their eyes widened at what I said. I wasn't sure why. They immediately started telling me not to take it and that I was better off just exempting and getting a B+ for the semester grade. I really wanted to take this midterm because if I got an A on it, I would get an A for the semester grade and my GPA wouldn't go down. No matter how many times I told them that I was going to take it and that I was sticking with my decision, they kept trying to persuade me not to. They told me that it was too difficult, that it was nearly impossible to get an A. All of these doubts surrounded me and you know what I did? Just like Tiana, I ignored every single negative comment that came out of their mouths. As John Cena said in his book, "Be a work in progress," and other things I'd like to tell my younger self. Don't take someone else's word on what you can accomplish. Although I've never felt super confident about my math skills, I wanted at least try to get an A on the midterm. It's always better to take the risk because if you don't try at all, you will never know what could have happened if you did. According to Joel Osteen in his book, "You are stronger than you think. Unleash the power to go bigger, go bold, and go beyond what limits you." You can keep an apple seed on a shelf for years. It looks nice, it doesn't have to get dirty, doesn't have to get uncomfortable, but that seed would never become what it was created to be. If I don't take the risk, I will never reach my full potential. So I studied, I barely slept, I stayed up late nights working with my dad on problems that I'd struggled with in the past. My parents and my brother believed in me, so I believed in myself. My friends' doubts had made me so determined to prove them wrong that it was all that I could think about. As I walked into the exam room that morning, I was blasting the Princess and the Frog soundtrack in my ears. Almost There, played as I walked into the room. And Tiana's words of encouragement inspired me to believe in myself when it seemed like very few people did. Later that day, when I opened my exam result, guess what I saw? I saw an A. I immediately jumped up and went outside my class to call my parents. I was so proud of myself and all of my hard work. I knew that it was possible. Just because getting an A seemed impossible for my friends didn't mean that it was impossible for me. We are not the same people, we are designed differently. According to the book, "The Good Among the Great: Nineteen Traits of the Most Admirable, Creative, and Joyous People" by Donald Von De Mark, the good among the great are calm when facing the unknown. So they don't halt themselves, fearful of what may happen to them if they try something new. And my optimism was the reason I was able to accomplish this goal. And like Tiana said before, I'm almost there. After seeing my exam result, I could finally say I'm there. Thank you.
Oh my God, that was great. Janessa, we have something for you.
Like, three-four, right? Remember in the movie? They're like, no way. No way, you're from three-four?
It takes a village.
Janessa, Janessa, come on up. We wanted to present you from our club to you. A little thank you, a little check for you for all your hard work and all your effort, okay? Alright. Thank you, thank you Mayor, thank you Councilman, Councilwoman, Vice Mayor, Tammy, for everything that you guys do for our community.
Jim, thank you for everything you do for our community. This is a gentleman who, I'm serious, he wears many hats in our community and they're all volunteer. Right now, he's representing the Optimist Club, but his work with the Scouts, with the Boy Scouts and so many other activities in our community for years and years and years.
Thank you.
A real role model.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, let's see, is Coach Alan Pacheco, is he here?
I don't think so.
No, okay, so we're gonna defer this to the next meeting, the recognizing of the Miami Springs VG U-18 girls soccer team. Their championship, but we'll defer that to the next one. I know the girls were gonna be in practice today. So we'll go to presentation item 4D. Presentation by Mr. Rob Gorlin, awarding the city of Miami Springs the STEM City of the Year Award for the city's consistent support of STEM activities at the Recreation Center for over 10 years. Is Mr. Gordon here?
He's not, he's not. No, he's not in.
I don't see him here.
So we'll defer that to, okay. Then the City Hall Artist. I know they had the opening ceremony earlier.
It's just announcing that we have.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and announce that. Again, every month we have Art in City Hall down in our lobby and we display the talent of members of our community. And I really encourage everyone, if you get a chance, just stop by City Hall and take a look at it. It's so refreshing to see that there's so much talent in our community. And this year, I know they had the opening night, I think last week, it was the night that we weren't right having a council meeting. But our City Hall Lobby Artist of the Month for June is the Miami Springs Senior High AP Cambridge Art Students from Ms. Beth Goldstein's class. And it's 3D artwork and sculptures on display. They really are amazing, the talent of of these students. So please stop by even when you're leaving the meeting for those that are here and take a quick look. Okay, so we go now to open forum. Erica, do we have anyone signed up?
Signed up and no one is online for open.
No one's virtual, okay. Then we'll move to approval of the council meeting, the council minutes for the May 22nd meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Call the vote please.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. The next agenda item is the report from the Historic Preservation Board. Do we have someone? Oh, Jim, hey. Okay, and this is on the city entry signs. We had, just to refresh everyone's memory, we had at an earlier meeting asked the Historical Preservation Board assign them the task of coming up with recommendations for historic signs at the entrances to the city that were in keeping with the Pueblo Mission kind of, is it called Pueblo Mission Revival? I never get it straight. Pueblo Mission.
Depends on who you're reading at the moment.
Okay. To kind of acknowledge that when someone enters in the city and I think Councilwoman Bravo, this is something that you brought up of trying to promote that. So and it's very in keeping with our 100-year Centennial Celebration that we're preparing for.
Well, our small mission, our small assignment. I believe though, it should be, there should be a memo, the copy of memo in your, okay. Basically, we were charged through the clerk from y'all to come up with some ideas, working with, I think, Parks and Recreation in terms of they determined the two locations. And that's at the westward, I mean, I'm sorry, the Curtis Parkway entrance coming into the Miami Springs. And the other is where construction is going on over by right, next to the middle school. And if you have the opportunity to see it, or at least for the Curtis Parkway entrance, we, what we did is we went through like national parks and kind of scanned the internet scan and came up with a suggestion. This may be a starting point because I'm not really clear on the intention of this, so this may be the exploratory or starting point. But the one we came up with was basically a larger piece for Curtis and a smaller piece, smaller entrance side due to the amount of land available. There's not that much land on Royal Point Ciana. But for, and the entrance we proposed, and as you can see, I'm sorry.
Through the chair, I'm sorry. Erica, can we post the agenda with the images there on the? Or no?
Yes, I have to disconnect your laptop momentarily, if that's okay.
I mean, if the, if the dais wants to see it up there.
Their overhead trajectory part, I thought you used to have a, no.
So we have it.
I have it here, if you wanted to explain something as we were talking, to make it easier for.
I think we all have it in our.
Basically.
It's in the agenda package too. Okay.
For you all to review and understand, that's a point. Basically, both have the theme of a stucco, the modeled plaster that you see in the Pueblo style, wood, Inca-style post. And also the lettering and the signage obviously would be up to y'all, it would be a part of determining what should be there. So of the, of the, of the two, that's our starting point, depending on your feedback. I don't know how you would want to step next or.
Thank you. Jim, why did y'all pick two different styles instead of this one? The size of the?
When you're coming in past Blessed Trinity, the opening hall weren't so larger. We would have liked to have done something larger at all of the entrances. But over by the middle school, it's just where there's hardly any space. So it's scale probably.
Okay.
In terms of coming into the city, the larger one with the towering would be a little bit more impressive. Because I don't know that we have, the way we enter our city, that we really have a front door per se. We have the front door coming into the circle, once you hit the circle, coming in with a bridge, Curtis. But a lot of the other points are a little more vague.
And I don't remember when we were discussing this, I don't think we necessarily said East Drive and and what is the other location? Curtis.
Well, that's.
I think we were just saying entrances to cities, you know, like entrances. So this is probably something we can expand to. There's other, like clearly from South Royal Point Ciana, when you're coming in from like Office Depot, there's that little triangle park that once we finish the South Royal Point Ciana roadwork.
Maybe harder to see on this one, but on this, this would be the idea for the smaller entrance areas.
Okay.
And probably replicate the same thing in several areas.
And these are in keeping with the Pueblo Mission?
Right.
Style.
Unfortunately, I'm looking now at the memo, the one for over by the middle school is a little harder to see. It's really a takeoff from the Country Club Hotel, from the Miami Springs Rehab Center. If you've ever noticed in front of it, I don't think there's a sign on it now, but it's very similar to that when you were raised. So again, we're trying to pull in the history of the city, you know, in terms of just very subtly.
Does anyone have any questions? I think, I mean, I think these look great, I think they raise attention, they're kind of like, you look at it and you're going, why is that? And it, you know, it kind of connects to, oh, it has to do with the history of Miami Springs. I see what you're saying with the sign number two of not the stone, but more the the Pueblo Stucco style to make it more in keeping instead of the the textured Adobe style, not stone. So I'm guessing the picture that's here is stone, but down here it says the Adobe.
We're suggesting not stone, but the Adobe stucco.
Okay.
Similar to what you see at Stannix.
So I think the next step, you have, Councilman?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see, I'd like to see other options. I know, I know you guys, I had before I ran for council, I talked to a gentleman in Santa Fe. And very helpful and do a bunch of stuff, have emails, like it's sent to you to look at it. But you know, maybe just get another person's perspective on this because the style, and they're doing a lot of modern stuff and at the same time, not losing the history.
Vice Mayor, can you work with them? Because what we did is we asked our Historical Preservation Board to come up with recommendations to us.
And use our liaison.
And you're, so if you could work with them on the board to come up with more recommendations. I think this is a great start, yes. And.
I'm not naive to it, I've used to work in design too, one of many hats in the past. And you don't sell anything on the first pass. So at least if this can start giving some idea of what the expectations are because again, we were pretty much throwing something out we liked, but we didn't know if it was specifically addressing some of the ones.
And I think one thing to remember is that, that you know, ideally, we'll have these at all entrances to the city or by the railroad tracks. You know, on South Royal Point Ciana, I'm trying to think what others, I don't know. But you know, just as soon as, so that as soon as you come into our city, it's like, oh, I'm in Miami Springs. You know, right now, there's a lot of entrances to the city where you would never know. I mean, eventually you kind of, you know, realize you're in a different area, you're in the city, but it should be. Right. I think one of the things we ideally is if we could get some feedback before our budget meetings, because our budget meetings are coming up now in August. So Vice Mayor, if you think you can work with them. So that would be helpful so that we could move, you know, hopefully, or at least consider it during budget season of how much we'll need. And then I guess maybe work with Tammy to get an idea of how we would estimate what the cost is per sign, depending for the two signs or whatever other signs you're gonna show us. Already have an estimate of what the cost would be for the sign and then the installation, which I'm guessing our esteemed Public Works staff back there, Liz and Laz there. Listen, I love that, Laz and Liz, Liz and Laz, how it goes together. Will be the ones installing it.
That would be helpful to us because what we're doing is establishing the criteria now. So once we start sliding into that, that's why I say this was just kind of an initial to get a response.
Did you get an idea of how much space? Like when you decided with the space?
We could talk, it would depend. Most of the locations are about not much wider than what that front white wall with the, or block wall with the seal. So that kind of limits, that was planned, that was the second idea, trying to limit something more in terms of height and size for safety and for, you know, recognition. The, in terms of possibly coming directly into the circle and at the Curtis entrance, it could be larger because there's more space. And I think it'd be nice to have something a little bit larger.
Yes. So maybe.
The entrance on Curtis is getting a little confusing with all our different things we've added and including even the, I don't know if you didn't notice the old Gulf Oil Garden Club monument there. I don't think anybody sees that, but so there's a variety of things to look at.
Hopefully with our Centennial Celebration, we can draw attention, refocus on some of these things that over the years, over 100 years, you know, these monuments have been put up and then kind of forgotten. And you know, with the Centennial Committee, I'm sure that they'll be looking at ways to kind of. I was gonna ask Liz and Laz if you could perhaps look at some of the sites that they're looking at and give. look at some of the sites that they're looking at and give us, you know, let them have an idea of how much space we're talking about, what the possibilities are of for a sign. So we can kind of get all this together.
Yeah, because we can figure in terms of width, height, spacing.
And then the cost and, right, and making sure that those are locations that we can put in something, but this looks awesome.
Following from apparently, I thought Parks and, um, Park, um, Parkway has sent, had identified those two points as their, as their charge. I don't know. So that's what we've lost.
Yes, I think they did years ago of those are locations that needed signs. Um, but ideally we should have them throughout the city, you know, something that gives that, that, um.
Consistency.
Yeah. And, and the essence of our, our, our historical theme, you know, we were a themed city, just like Coral Gables is a themed city and Opalac and all these other themed cities, and we're a themed city. So, um, that's part of our history.
Well, it looks like we have good assignments.
We're on board. So.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I believe Jim, uh, you provided some other, um, options as well. So I guess I don't know if George was on board.
Two initial options to, to y'all to get, I guess, to get the started. We had reviewed probably about eight. Maybe you've seen a copy of that somewhere one.
Yeah, maybe. I don't know if you ever saw it. Maybe you want.
I haven't, but we'll, we'll get together and the point is getting something we all like and.
And then you can make a determination of how many sent, how many, uh, I think we're, we're rolling now. We're developing criteria.
Oh, yeah.
We know it's important. So.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Wonderful. Thank you, Jim. Thank you to the Historical Preservation Board, to all the members, their hard work.
That's great.
Okay. So moving right along, um, let's see, our next agenda item is, um, we don't have any public hearings and we have a consent agenda. We have several items on the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they want to pull out? For discussion?
I'm sorry to, I apologize. I don't know like how I bring it back up only because the, one of the coaches got here for the, uh, team. And if you wanted to present it that way. I don't know.
Oh, okay. Yes. Um, so Coach Pacheco.
No, he's not Pacheco, but.
Do you want to, do you want, we have certificates for the girls and we can acknowledge them now, or we could do them in a future meeting if they want to come to a future meeting? Would you rather? Oh, okay.
The parent, right?
Oh, okay.
You, Ellie's there.
So none of the girls know. Some of the facts was given by the city, but it wasn't.
Well, I, I think what it is, is Mr. Pacheco reached out to me and said he'd like to have him acknowledged. So we coordinated it through our city clerk. But perhaps.
It wasn't on city side.
Okay. So let's do this. It's up to you. We can reschedule.
And, um, on Thursday, we're gonna do something at B D Field, where it does this time print B D Park. And maybe some of the council members can go up there, so we don't double whack this up with the city council. We can do it another day. We can do it now.
What would you prefer? I know I can't be there Thursday, but that's not, you know, at all. Um, but what would the girls rather, what would you prefer to have the girls here so we can acknowledge them? Okay. And now we would too, because we'd like to see them and congratulate them in person. So let's.
They might make it to the national championship.
Okay, and so you're the, the coach?
Yes.
This assistant coach, could you get with Erica? Erica's our city clerk right over here? And, um, reach out to her or just ask her now for her contact information and then she can coordinate to put you back on the agenda. Okay. All right. Wonderful.
She was actually, Elizabeth was, uh, teammates with my daughter and they, and the same coach, they made it to the regional final and were overtime loss. They would have gone to the national championship. So this time hopefully they make it.
We'll be rooting for you for sure. Okay. Thank you and thank the girls. We're excited for them. All right. So, um, let's go to, um, agenda item nine, which is consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they want to pull out for discussion?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Um, I would like to pull out B.
Okay.
That's about it.
Anyone else?
Did you say B?
Yes.
That's what I was gonna.
Okay, perfect. And then I wanted to, um, A. Pull out A. Okay. Um, so let's go ahead and we'll pull out A and B, and then we have C, D, E, and F.
Mayor motion to approve nine, C, D, E, and F.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Santin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman ahead.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Um, okay, so let's do Agenda A, the resolution. This is with the, I guess I have two questions. Let's start with the easier one first. Is with the flag. I know a lot of residents have over the years, um, this is, you know, um, pretty consistent that residents ask about the flag that used to be up on that tower. And Tammy, perhaps you could explain why that flag is, they're not replacing the flag.
So basically I reached out, uh, to Crown Castle, uh, back in January, um, and as, as part of the flag not being, uh, removed, it, the flag was removed back in two thousand and sixteen. And the purpose that the flag was initially removed then was because, um, they were doing some internal renovations to the actual structure of the tower itself. They were removing some of the coax cables and making some, some room space, you know, in, within the, um, tower itself. Um, and after further, uh, information was given to me, um, back when, uh, Mr. Nash was still here as our Public Works Director, um, I understand that there was a, a, a potential almost incident with one of the workers who was working on the tower itself. And for that reason, um, Crown Castle had chosen not to put back up the flag. So apparently the, um, the rope with a metal cord somehow was dangling. And it nearly touched the FPNL power lines that are running adjacent, um, below the actual flag, it, flag pole itself. And basically start, you know, sparked a little bit of, uh, a fire and, and nearly shocked the workers. So, um, because they could not safely put back up those, those ropes in the lanyards, um, up there, they felt that it was a huge safety issue. And unfortunately, sometimes things only have to happen once in order for you to realize or us to realize that it is potentially a safety hazard. So we did reach out, um, to them and they have come back to us and they have initially told us that they are more than happy to relocate a smaller sized hole, um, somewhere else within city limits. Um, it won't be as, as tall, obviously with such a, an enormous flag. But, um, they, we met, uh, Liz and Laz's team over there, met with, uh, with myself, um, out in the field. And we felt that maybe an ideal place would be in between the incoming and outgoing bridges at that catwalk area where the pedestrian catwalk is. Um, obviously, uh, we cannot do anything as of yet, um, because we'd have to get some cranes in that area to be able to move it. Um, but ideally they would, they would put it at their own expense. They would, they would put the flag pole there. And, um, and then of course, uh, later on, any of the flag, um, exchanges on the pole would have to be at the expense of the city. Um, but they were willing to do that for us.
Okay. Is there, um, what about lighting? For that, if we put the flag there, and I'm not sure what the lighting was for the previous location, but the flags are, would it be put down every night?
Did they mention what size flag?
They were supposed to come back to us with the actual size of, depending on what area we chose, what size the flag pole initially could be, and whatever size the flag pole is would be the, you know, the, uh, determination on whether of what size the flag itself would be.
Lighting?
Lighting. So I, we didn't discuss lighting. Um, but I'm sure with our in-house electrical contractors, we could certainly add some lighting to it. But that was not a discussion.
Because normally the flag that was flying on the original tower was not brought down. It was just left up.
Hmm.
Right? Or was it?
Correct.
Okay. So it must've had some light. We're supposed to have a light on flag at night. So it must've had some light. So let's see if they'll provide the lighting. That should be something that they provide at their expense.
Ask them, certainly.
If, um, the size, I mean, obviously it should be a very high hole, not a, a traditional. Should be a very high one also that, you know, right there at the entrance.
Sixty, forty, forty to sixty feet, something like that. In between that range, it could be, um, within. So that's, that's a pretty relatively high, uh, pole.
Yeah, that's about the equivalent of a six-story building.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Come up to this, to the microphone, please.
One of the positives that we have is that the, um, bridges are going to be rehabbed. And they will have brand new lighting. So that whole entire area, we're working together. Um, not just the flag pole. So it's kind of a whole bunch of things that are going in motion and that's what we're thinking about. So the idea of lighting it is great because we can do that. Um, we've had the pedestrian bridge repainted. Um, we're working on possibly some banners. Uh, we want to do the flag pole definitely for sure in that location. We just don't know where we can place it. There might be a tree that might be in the way. But that's okay because there's relatively small what's there. We might be able to offset it a little bit and it'll be a little bit um, more towards the outgoing bridge than right smack in the middle. Cause there's, the pedestrian won't allow, right? The way that it divides, that it kind of has the stairs that go down. So we have a little bit more space to the right, which is closer to the outgoing bridge, which actually takes it closer to where the original one is. It's just going to be on the opposite side of where it is now.
Okay. So in essence, that would be.
And we can light it because we do have, um, connections there to be able to light it. We just have to.
Well, I, I think Mayor wants as part of that, uh, flag pole to have them light it.
I mean, the option is there.
Cause the electricals available. For the lighting to be included in there and providing the, the light pole and, you know, any electrical, whatever needs to.
It's available there. So we have the means to be, or they'll have the means to be able to light.
Because I'm guessing it has to be a pretty expensive, big light to, I don't know.
LED options nowadays probably isn't going to be that expensive.
Okay. But let's have them have that as part of the project of.
We will.
Really true.
Is that, yes, sir.
Yeah. Oh, just out of curiosity, how, how tall is the, the structure that's there where the flag was?
The one, I want to tell you it's either sixty or seventy. I'm not mistaken. Yeah.
Okay.
The tower. I think the tower, I think is taller than that. Seventy or eighty?
That was on his back foot, maybe a hundred, but.
Yeah, it's really tall.
Yeah.
So the power lines are right there. I mean, they make a point of where it is. It's just give us.
Very important consideration.
It, give us a, a replacement and we're happy with it.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Um, I had a question I asked earlier. I don't know if we're going to have the information now. Um, I want to make sure that our tower agreement is competitive with other towers that are being rented in other municipalities.
Totally agree with you. That was my second part of this question. I thought the flag was easier to start with that. Okay.
You want to take over?
No, that's, it's, go ahead.
No, no.
No, thank you. Thank you, Liz.
I do see that we have a four percent increase every year, which mounts up to a little over twelve thousand dollars for the next five years, which doesn't even match the current lease agreement that we have for one year. Um, I just want to make sure that before making this decision, we are where we're at. Um, as far as a whole, I mean, we're looking at making sure that we're, we have appropriate salary schedules. I just want to make sure that our agreements are just as competitive with other.
Well, and I think to that point, um, also is I notice on here that it's, um, successive, the term of the contract, um, commens for ten years in twenty, uh, two oh three, two thousand and three for ten years and with two successive five-year terms. So now we're in twenty twenty-three. And then we have, um, at the expiration of the agreement, the term of the agreement will automatically be extended for four additional successive five-year terms. Um, I, I too had that, that was my second part of the question on here is, um, this seems for everything that's increasing so much, this seems like a very small amount of rent that the city's, um, collecting for that. And maybe it is competitive. Maybe it is, you know, reasonable for that. But how did we negotiate that? How did we arrive at such a small increase after, if this was in twenty, uh, two thousand and three and we're twenty years later? Um, we're not getting much.
Yeah. I, I, I am going to have to get back to you with that, um, answer. However, um, that the Metro PCS portion is only a portion of what we receive on the tower itself. Um, you're the date I got from, uh, Chris, um, the number we've received in, uh, rental, uh, for the tower itself from Sprint, we received ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. And now, uh, in, in February of this year from Metro PCS, we have received twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars for a total of a hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars in total. So between those two, we get almost a hundred and, you know, a hundred and seven.
Well, the nine thousand dollars. Ninety-five thousand is annually.
That, yes.
That we get.
From Sprint.
From Sprint.
And then this is a sub contract as well to, to that tower itself. Um, and it, we get about, uh, thirteen, almost thirteen thousand dollars just from Metro.
So through the chair. So we have, just to structure this down, we have Crown Castle, right? Which is the owner of the tower. Then we have branches. We have Verizon. Do we have Verizon?
So Verizon is somebody who has already been talking to us in the background, uh, who will be coming, coming forward um, in the near future as well.
So we have the tower, we have Metro, Sprint, Verizon paying Crown Castle to tell, to use a tower. Then we have Crown Castle that's paying us an agreement. So I think that what I need to know is that what we're making off annually, not with Sprint, not with Metro, not with the phone lines, but with the actual tower. Cause that's what, that's what it's worth. That's where the value is at, right? They, they can't run their businesses without the tower and it's, it's in, inside of our city. So I wanted to know. I mean, I can't make a decision on this today because I really want to make sure that I, my city is getting what, what it's worth in comparison to other towers. So that's just me. Um, I'm sorry I couldn't get to you guys earlier, but this is something that if we're going to take, add, now lock in the agreement, because we have other um, amendments here that we would have to follow through come, you know, the expiration of years or every five years, you know, there's a, you know, we're discussing. But I want to make sure that we're getting a, a good dollar for the tower. Cause it's a demand. They, they need something that, that we have.
I think what concerns me is that there's such long-term agreements. So, um, it seems like for such a long-term agreement, we're really pigeonholing ourselves into this rate. Um, so can we get a little more information just as to how this is, this is why I had pulled it from the consent agenda. Well, the flag, but the other part was this of just the rate is kind of, it just doesn't seem like that much of an increase that we're getting in rent for a space that seems pretty viable to them, but also because it's such a long-term agree, agreement that we're not renewing it.
And I'm, I'm going to have to really, you know, get with Roger and team and see because this is not, you know, Sprint is the, the one that rents the tower. So I have to see what what it is that we can do with Metro PCS as far as like a, a, a sub-agreement, um, to, to the tower itself. So, um, and I just want to correct one thing for the record. We are actually getting those amounts directly from Sprint and Metro PCS, correct? Um, Chris? Okay. Okay. So we can have those answers for you.
Okay. So can we, um, let's defer this item to the next meeting?
We can do that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you. And then, um.
And one quick thing before we move off of the, um, flag itself. You had asked the question of how tall the, the tower is itself. It's of, it's a hundred and thirty-two feet in height.
Figured it was the whole run around. Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um. All right. So.
When did that tower, when was that tower? Blasted?
Don't know. I know that this, this, uh, ground lease goes back all the way back to, um, well, this one particularly goes back to two thousand and four. I want to say that the Sprint one goes back even further than that. So I, I, I'd have to. I want to say that the sprint one goes back even further than that. So I I'd have to. I'd have to see when the actual tower was installed.
If I can add something.
Yes, sir.
If um definitely good thing of the fairness, because that's on the low end. That's a low, we're in the low end with that number. Usually for ten to twenty thousand dollars is typical.
Think so, especially, you know, this is the revenue that comes to the city. I mean, it's our residents and you know, it's um so it's important that, especially for such a long. Lease agreement. So, all right, let's defer that. Um the flag part of it then, are we in agreement to? Um let um Public Works know that. As far as that location, I mean, it's basically as close to where it originally was as not. It's the entrances city. I think it'll look very nice. To have a very large flagpole there. Um so when we defer this for the next one, maybe we can get an update. On Liz, you know, and Liz, whatever you find out about the exact location and. And um a very high pole there. Um the size of the flag, which is what Councilman ahead had asked about.
Yeah, I think it should be a big flag. Oh. Uh I was trying to see on Google Street View, there's a lot of like tall palm trees on as you get closer. If you go. If the center is the pedestrian bridge, as you get closer to the outgoing bridge. I don't know if it's better. I mean, I feel like we got baited and switched. I know that that cities. Cities are very particular about these cell phone towers going up in their communities. They don't want just a just a eyesore. You know, and and these companies can get creative. There are some that are made to look like trees uh. So I feel like at some point, they sold us on that we were gonna get a big majestic flagpole and. Those FP and L lines didn't just show up. So I don't I don't see why now we have to. And I mean, it's a hundred and thirty feet and now we're getting a smaller one. The very least, they should be lighting it. I just, I feel like now we've got an empty flagpole. I I feel like that's kind of a bait and switch uh, you know. Can't go back in time, but but I'm sure that at the time that they were pitching us on that, they were selling us and that it was gonna be beautiful. And now they're like, oh, we can't do it anymore. I don't, I don't know.
Well, and I think that brings to the point, because I know this is, you know. Something that for years, I know since I've been on the council every now and then, residents, we've obviously had that flag there and you know, and it's always been. So that's why. Uh the more important part to me is what I wanted to discuss was this lease agreement that I'm just not real comfortable. With, you know, how we got to this figure. I feel like, you know, it should be, we should be getting more rent for that. Um and especially signing such an agreement for such a long time, but um. Uh the flag also. So let's defer it. Let's and each of us can reach out to um Tammy in the meantime to do any research that we want. Before the next meeting. Yes, yes, ma'am.
One last thing, uh since we're gonna defer, maybe we want to look into other towers that may also still currently have a flag waving. Cause I'd like to see what's the difference between their city and ours where we can't wave a flag. Just to.
Proximity to the FP and uh FP and L lines that run.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yes, yes, yes.
But we didn't have that issue before, did we?
Yeah, but but let's keep in mind, safety, um you know, safety regulations and stuff keep increasing. And you know, over twenty years, it's very possible that, you know, electrical safety regulations have changed and. You know, for worker safety, it's almost always to improve, you know, safety for the community, but also for workers and all this. So. Don't, I'm not too rash at saying if they didn't do it twenty years ago, you know, why can't they do it now? It's possible that, you know, that that might. I'll give them the benefit of the doubt. Let's look into it.
They didn't told them um in that area, I thought they had told the lines under. Were they throwing the lines under?
Oh, not there.
No, not there. Okay.
No. So we we are going to be throwing some of the FP and L lines underground. As part of the pump station, pump station work. However, it's coming from the opposite direction, but in order to do it from where the actual flagpole is, I mean, you've got. All kinds of, you've you've got a a power, you know, like a a panel box on. Off of Hook Square. There's there's a lot more involved in, because we we actually looked at that as an alternative. To possibly doing um the electrical underground to be able to put back the flag there. Not saying it's impossible, but it would be. A a substantial amount of money for us to put that underground. And there's a lot of components that go along with it, because there there is some uh panel boxes. That are facing um the Hook Square side on the outgoing bridge, so.
So Richard.
Yes, sir.
I'm I'm with the Councilman for head. I'm uh, you know, it it I first of all, I'd like to know how big that flag is. I'd like to know how many feet it was, because it really looked majestic. Uh and 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 if we're gonna go this. Alternative option, I'd like to see something, you know, very similar, which means you you'd have to have the kind of structure for it. As well, so um you know, those are things that I would look at as well as where it might be located. Uh because like Mayor, every now and then, at least once a week, someone asks me somewhere along the line. Even while we're shopping or something. Hey, what happened to that flag? You know, really missed that flag, so. Um I would say an alternate would have to be something close to, I would hope, size and scope. Um I don't know how they maintain the uh question of. When the flag gets tattered, you know, in other words, how, you know, the longevity of them. Um I don't know laws or someone may know. Um but um you know, it's another question. Especially with the, we do very active flag retirements here.
Yes, but that would be on us when the flag, they would provide the pole.
The new flag pole would be, the exchange of the flags would be on us. If we were to figure out some. Way of getting it back on to this, the actual sprint tower, that's on them. That's part of their contract.
Okay, well.
To change out the flag.
Seems like we got a few things here, you know.
So Mayor, I've had I've had residents that I guess think that, you know, because we're. We're in this position that we, you know, they're like, hey, talk to your contacts at the county about the flagpole uh right where. Uh right across from the airport where the little over overpasses, you're going like to the intermodal center. That little over there, there's a giant flagpole there and for a while it didn't have a flag. If you're going down uh Le June. If you're going south, when you you you're crossing right where the entrance is to the airport, there's a giant flagpole there. Where the overpass is, it goes to the intermodal center. And they used to, the residents used to tell me like. Yeah, like, hey, why don't you, can you, you guys have connections in the county? Ask them why. I feel like people see an empty flagpole and it kind of like, like, why isn't there a flag there? You know, so we've got an enormous one hundred and thirty foot. Cell phone tower flagpole that doesn't have a flag, and that's why people keep asking us about it. And I feel like. A flagpole, we're gonna kick you a flagpole that's half the size. I don't, I just don't see how that. Kind of makes up for the fact it's not our fault that that they can't. Follow through on what they said they were gonna do it. We were told it was gonna be, it was gonna have a flag, I would assume. I don't know. I just uh I I feel like. Uh we, I just feel like we got duped on this one, but.
Let's defer it to the next meeting and and Tammy, if you and your staff could look into all these issues that we're looking at. All right.
I'm sorry, Mayor, is there a motion to defer?
Yes, yes, please. Um do you need a vote?
Second.
Um, any discussion? Call vote.
Vice Mayor Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman ahead?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Roger. Um, okay, so then let's do the next consent agenda item that was pulled, which is B. Was that Councilwoman Bravo or Vice Mayor?
Yes, um thank you. So I pull this item because um. Obviously, either way, something's gonna go up here and. If Tammy, if you can explain the increased request so that I could go ahead and piggyback off of what we had spoken about earlier, which. Hopefully I can get some clarity here. Um just I want to like compare and contrast two situations. Versus a fiscal impact and an increase.
Certainly. So every year we get a letter from the county. Um that stipulates the um our current disposal fees versus uh the new. Uh rates. And as part of that, on um Exhibit A of the resolution. We have um. Put two different uh graphs there of. Which indicate what the uh increases are from the current in, you know, increases to, sorry, the new, the rates to the the new rates. Uh for both residential, single family residential and multi-family residential dwellings. Which have three or four, uh three or four units, okay? Um they're very minimal, as you can see, increases uh to the sanitation fees. Um the total fee uh for each single, for for both the single and the multifamily dwellings. Um represents approximately a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, is that that the number that you were getting?
That's the number that I was getting for you. I don't have the breakdown for single and and multifamily. We're still looking at that, but.
In combination?
In combination, it's um, it represents over a hundred, approximately a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so basically what I wanted to understand is that um if this estimated one hundred thousand dollars would be. Better for us to assume through our general ledger or to just go officially with the increase? And then have to um, or or would the impact be better? I just don't know how how the impact would be. For example, now we're gonna be going into budgeting and millage. So if we increase this. Would we still have an opportunity to play with our millage? So I guess when we cross that. That line of, because obviously we want to, we want to decrease the millage. But I just don't know if we take the impact upfront with the estimated one hundred thousand. Or increasing through these rates that they're proposing. What would be the better situation here? I don't know if I'm trying to explain correctly.
Uh and and I'm I'm not sure that.
So if we.
Yeah, but I I I know what you're saying.
I said it earlier.
About it, but um.
Chris, you want to come up?
Regardless, one way or another, the city. Has this increase of approximately one hundred thousand dollars, because we pick up garbage, trash and recycling. For both single family and multifamily dwellings. So regardless, we're going to see the impact of this hundred thousand dollar increase. What this is, is that this recommendation before you is to have those increases. Uh be part of the residential costs. So to have the increases. Um moved to having the resident pay for them versus.
Okay, Chris, maybe I, so I don't know if I should pass it over to the residents?
We'll just.
Or.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman.
Good.
One quick distinction here. This sanitation fee, hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna give you the breakdown on is an enterprise fund, which is a fee based charge. Build through your taxable. It, the millage rate is in the general fund. You're talking two different types of funds that. They don't.
Okay, so if.
They're not interchangeable. You cannot commingle money. Your millage rate adjustment up or down doesn't have anything really to do with the sanitation.
So we don't pass over the cost and the city wants to assume the one hundred thousand through what account would that come through?
The sanitation fund.
Oh, so there's a sorry. Okay, so sanitation funds.
Let's say that fund had a reserve. Basically, you're gonna start eating down the reserve of approximately a hundred thousand. Dollars per year.
Per year.
In line with the county pass through increase.
Okay.
It wouldn't affect the general fund military.
Okay, so I guess the better case scenario is to pass it through.
I mean, it's the it's the county's fee.
Yeah, you're.
Yeah, either way, we.
Basically, you're at the mercy of the county.
Okay.
This, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, how often is this fee review? Is it every year?
Every year we get a letter.
What's interesting is if you look, but if you know how county is and you know, it's just sometimes they don't realize that, you know. Oh, we need to charge more and less and obviously labor has gone up a lot for everyone, but if you look at the past increase in this. Um memo from Chris, um the percent increase over the fiscal years, there's really no rhyme or reason to it. I mean, sometimes it's none, sometimes it's two point three. Sometimes it's less than one, then it's, you know, the last two years is four. Uh obviously, the last two years being four, we all know with inflation and and. Cost of salaries and everything that's gone up um and services, but. There's nothing that you can really pinpoint here with the county. It's it's just kind of almost arbitrary how they. Pass it on. Um I think what we need to look at is that the increase. Um even though it's four percent, we're we're um talking about for less than five dollars a month to single family homes and. Um multifamily dwellings will be what, like a dollar or something, under two dollars?
Mayor, I don't I don't find it to be that large of it since two thousand fourteen. I mean, there's a lot of fees that have gone up of.
Right.
A lot has changed since two thousand fourteen. I'm not, I don't have that kind of sticker shock from.
No, what I'm saying is that if you look at the percent increase, there's really no rhyme and reason how one year. So, but I still think it's reasonable. Um the five, less than five dollars a month for a single family home, considering what's gone up for.
And if you look at the increase since two thousand fourteen, I mean, it's.
Okay.
The multifamily is just three to four. One, one to four, I mean, two to four.
Three and four, three and.
Three and four. So duplex.
Hey. Do you have a motion on this? Is there any more discussion? Actually, we're discussing it before a motion.
No, through the chair, I'm gonna, I have to vote for it, because you're gonna get dinged either way. It's just, it it did jump, though. It did, it did jump.
But everything has jumped and this is garbage.
More than half, more than half. I guess this is a route we're going.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve uh nine B.
All right, any more can discussion? Call a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman ahead?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. So thank you, Chris. Um we go to old business and we have a presentation from Terry Garcia and Jose Lopez from. Um the environmental engineering of B and A are um. Environmental engineers.
Architects.
Welcome. How are you?
Good evening.
It's uh great to be here today. Uh my name is Terry Garcia and I'm a partner with Bermejo Jamila Partners. We're engineering architectural firm and I know that Jose Lopez has been working with the city of Miami Springs for some time now. Um this is a quick report on uh the vulnerability and resilience assessment that we're doing for the city. Uh this is required by the state for all municipalities. Uh. Everyone is supposed to have their assessment and adaptation plan by twenty twenty five. Uh this is required by the state and it will allow you to access funds. Not only for planning, but for construction uh that are made available through through the state. Um. The Miami Springs, like any other coastal city, is uh is vulnerable. Uh to uh to uh sea level rise. And uh this is a very interesting um slide, because what this shows is the city of Miami Springs. And it's a water management uh system. Uh you are, your primary system is the C six canal. This is the one that allows you to have better drainage to uh to to in fact, take all the water that I didn't take. On myself today, coming into the into the meeting. Um and uh the the canal is uh owned and managed by the South Florida Water Management District. Your secondary set of canals is the Melrose Canal, which is operated by the city. And that allows uh then to go into the C six canal. And ultimately, you have.
With the Melrose Canal, is that part of the Esplanade Canal also?
It, yes, that's. Yes, it goes along.
It's also Esplanade.
Yes, yes.
And what about the Ludlum one? Because the C six is uh the Miami River, basically the Miami River Canal. So the the Ludlum Canal, is that part of Melrose or that is the one on between us and the FEC track?
Ludlum does not, um that canal does not, that's county, okay.
That's county. So so the Melrose is city and then ultimately you have a series of canals and ponds. That are managed mostly by homeowner association or neigh- neighborhood organizations. So this is, this is uh, this is your, your, your system of drainage and. And how it flows from from one to the other. Now, um if you look at this map, the the city of Miami Springs sits in the heart of the C six. Basin itself and um uh this is, this is quite important. Because then ultimately all that uh flows uh to uh the bay. Now, this study, uh why, why the city contracted us to do. Now, this study, uh why, why the city contracted us to do this study is because you have to comply. There's a state mandate that um requires that all municipal uh uh entities uh do this study to assess. Uh, what their vulnerabilities, their critical assets, how are they vulnerable to sea level rise and to flood? Um, it also allows you, as I said before. For you to to uh uh access funding opportunities. Um, and then it's a good, great tool to address your budgetary um uh process in 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 future years. Because it will guide you to your, when you do your capital program. Uh, where you have to put that money um to protect your assets, your infrastructure and your critical assets, your public buildings. Um, and ultimately, the study does uh go through a very rigorous process that identify what are those critical assets. Uh, within your city. Ultimately, it's uh it is to uh reach long term um sustainability and economic vitality. What we're doing, what we have been doing is finding out where the most vulner- vulnerable uh sites are, and Jose will go through those. Identify the inundation levels and how can they can affect the city's operation. Uh, in emergencies, et cetera. Um, and then the second part of the study. Will be, or the planning study, is to make recommendations to do an adaptation plan. You know, how you can protect your assets and the rest and ultimately the residents of Miami Springs. This is very interesting. You have seen uh um that sea level, you know, you hear sea level rises accelerating. Just so that you can, just a a a a small sample from in the nineteen nineties to two thousand. Though the sea level increased one inch every eleven years. Today, it increases one inch every three to four and a half years. So that is um incredible. In in addition to that, storms are becoming more intense. Um, they're localized to an area. And they last longer, so there's more water coming into into the city and to the entire area. Now, for um. These are, these are, um, this is a chart that is prepared by the National. Uh Oceanic Atmospheric Administration. And it guides, we are, as you see there in twenty twenty. It guides, uh, we are using the intermediate um uh line, which is what uh the grants uh require us to to use. Now, uh. The good. News is that in fact, the state is providing. A lot of funding, not only for planning, but also for construction. That will be open to uh to the city. Um, in twenty four, twenty five, it is expected, it which starts in July first. Then over two hundred and seventy five million dollars be available. And you will see this constantly uh in the news. Now, this is our scope of work. Those three green areas are the ones that we have completed and Jose will go. Through those results, which is what is the background information? What is the city's exposure analysis uh to flooding and sea level rise and what's the sensitivity? Uh, this is the report that he will be giving you uh the results and then our next step. Is to then assist you in preparing the adaptation plan. So now with that, for the hard part of the presentation, I leave it to Jose.
Thank you very much, Terry. I need to. Point at this step that uh it's really. Uh, I can say proud or to be here and now at this stage. Uh, we've worked with Tommy or William Alonso's. Uh, this and last round for the last four years, twenty nineteen, we started the first time we submit for this grant. And it was turned down because Miami Springs was not considered coastal. So then we have, we resubmitted by twenty twenty one. And at that time, Governor DeSantis opened this program with California Resiliency Program to all the cities, which is currently right now. And uh the new cycle is starting July first. And we can say that it's only uh you should be proud that Miami Springs is one of them. There's only five or six cities within Miami, this Miami-Dade County, which they are not into this program yet. Uh, everybody's in Broward County is. On it, and if you are in West Palm Beach. So that's how we are here today. And uh we still have a long way to go. Uh, there's a second phase coming out. But one of the things that we have, we have three phases, one with the vulnerability, which we worked with Kamisiderberg. Which we did all the modeling and that's we're gonna show you what we have it right now. And then we do the sensi- sensitivity vulnerability. Okay, so with that, this is available. In the website, this is the dashboard. We can go back and forth. Uh, that's this, there is now and you have all the different uh. Where are we? And there it goes. You can see. The same situation where we have the different uh. The different inundations level. This is where the hundred year storm surge today. That's without sea level rise. Then you have by the year twenty forty. If you have intermediate uh.
Jose, the the yellow?
Okay, I'll give you, it's green is, we're using the same uh, I'll I'll go in a minute. It's in the next slide. But this is one thing, it will be available. I think that Tommy can put it in the website. For all the local residents and you have all the different parameters from today to the year twenty seventy with the high uh. With a high inundation level. Oh, where are we now? Okay, go ahead. Okay, this is what we have. We're using the same parameters on Miami-Dade County. We are green is zero to one point five, which is really low, minimum impact. Uh, yellow is between one point five to three uh foot inundation, which is kind of a moderate. Uh, three to four, it's uh is significant. And anything above four feet is considered catastrophic or or extreme. So very difficult to uh. To come back and these are the areas for the year twenty seventy. That's the second step. On the study, which is sensitivity analysis. So from there, we move into. The third step, where you have all that information and we assesses. And we divided, uh, we separated in uh five different uh focus areas where you have A. Is there where you have the community centers? B is right now, what we have here is the urban area. C is the area where you have Stafford Park and uh and Raggin Park. Uh, D is the golf course. And E is a special as relates to the Melrose or Exponent Canal. And this is very important because one we have, as we can identify. That the canal is is one of the critical assets with the city, which that would qualify. To apply from funding next year and that's the next step that we're planning to do starting in July. We can get funding. Funding to construct and that's what is very important this slide. So that coming out, uh, once we have it, this is pretty much, oops. Uh, that's some renderings that we have shows where you have it today. Where you have a a hundred year storm and then you have with sea level rise. And by the year twenty forty and the year twenty seventy, what you have here and inundation about four point five feet. That's the community center. Uh, that's in the senior centers, senior center. That's the Prince Field. Which shows uh an invasion about five feet. And that's what you need to say by twenty seventy, assuming sea level rise and a high storm. So that's really the worst condition. This is the city hall right now. This uh now that's with the hundred year storm. And this is by the year twenty forty, you have is with sea level rise and this is by the year twenty seventy. This is the same thing. That's Raggin Park. That's in the good, but it's about, that's about four point five feet, four point seven inundation, and that's a staff or park too. And that's a golf course. Uh, that's the same, uh, that's the explanation, uh, seeing north. And seeing south and these are two are really important because one of the thing we have it, we're going to harden the Melrose Canal. So uh be ready for uh as connected to C six is really uh very connected to tide. So if you have any uh any uh sea level rise or high tide. I need to have it that this study is based on uh and the kind of the template that the. Uh, Florida State is is given and that's assuming the South Florida Water Management District doesn't doesn't do anything to the C six. Which it might not be true because you know the South Florida Water Management District is trying to do a loss of service and eventually. They will be planning to do some sort of structure, but right now it's not. So all this study is assuming the South Florida Water Management District, it will not be doing anything. So you're open directly to uh Biscayne Bay. And sea level rise. So with that, that's what we're done today. Yeah, sure.
Assuming that. South Florida Water Management District does nothing. And right now, the the C six canal is entering. Into the bay when we have flooding.
Correct.
Right? Are you saying, assuming they do nothing, if they do something, it will be to restrict the flow into Biscayne Bay or to improve the flow?
Well, one of the thing that Dogan is putting uh a gate or pump station.
Pardon me?
It will put in a gate or a pump station between C six and Biscayne Bay. So if there is a high level rise, it will not impact C six. Because you'll have a gate. And then you have it, if 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 it's backwards, so if C six is high and sea level rise is low, you will be having a pump station.
So it's not to restrict the flow?
No, 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 not be to restrict the flow, no.
Okay.
And that's pretty much.
So it's still improving, I'm sorry. So even if they do something, the intent would still be, because I know sometimes they're. Depends on what you're looking to save, you know, is the bay or is it the the flooding of the streets, even if. If they do work, the plan that they do would be. Um, our flood control.
Yes, yeah.
Would be the same or better, hopefully.
I have to say that we're working uh head to head with the district. They already saw this review. We have. Uh, Lenny, we have a lot of comments from them. They love it. They say that they took this one as a as a template, the law we're doing, so we're coordinating with them. So this is one of the steering committee and uh so all the work that we do, because you depended. A hundred percent with the district that was C six. And that's what happened right now. They're trying to get a C six high, so you have problems like in the Stafford Park. Where you have, you have really no differential here that between your drainage and C six and that's what. They have no flow, basically, and that's because C six is is really high. So that's an issue that that you have right now. So both, it's not only Miami Springs, you are Manly, High Alia, Miami, everybody that that. Depends on six six for drainage, depend what the district has. So you're not working on your own. It's uh that's one thing. That you need to depend what's happening with with your neighbors and you have to work together. So this is one thing that we've been collaboration. So that's what we have it right now. Today, we, this is one of the things that I have to point back, send it this report to FDP in Tallahassee, say that, yeah. We show this report, we have the input from elected officials for local residents. And we can move forward to the next step, which will be an additional plan. And that will be probably coming by the end of this year. That would be the second phase where you have him. Okay, now you know where the focus areas. What are you going to do? What are the alternatives? You have a pump station. We might have to have seawalls. You can do, you can raise the buildings. We don't know. That's the thing that will be coming next. So you might, hopefully, you'll see me. In October, November of this year and we'll come with the second phase of this report. Okay? And with that, I just need to, like I said, we're not going to our own. This is a uh, we're working with uh with Miami-Dade County. Actually, I don't have it here, but we have a slide. It's a, they did the modeling by the year twenty sixty. They didn't go to twenty seventy five. But the results are almost identical and the areas that you have, if you look at what Miami date and modeling are having and what we did, they are exactly the same thing. The the critical part, you have, they have four project areas and they're all like, they're all the same. The only difference that they have a residential area, which we do not consider. Because this report is only focused on critical assets owned by the city. So none of the residential areas are included in this study. Miami-Dade County, they do. So we only focus on the infrastructure that they own by the city and own on operated. Because that's the thing that this information that you have to have in consideration when you plan for the next twenty or thirty years. What can you do? Okay, but we're working with Miami Day Emergency Management, Miami, the water sewer. They have issues with the wells around the golf course. So they already have their modeling and so we're working all together. Okay, and uh so with that, I. I'm open to questions. If you have it, uh, I will do my best to answer.
Questions? Lots to take in. I have a few.
I'm sorry.
I guess one of the things I I wanted to. To ask you is, and I know this is for our critical assets, so it's looking at the senior center, the police, um, our city hall and, you know, the the city facilities. Um, and it's not for residential. But our residential areas will suffer greatly, you know, even if if, you know, we do something to, say, raise city hall, so it's not. What can we do to address the residential area? Because, you know, our residential area is what makes our community. And I understand the state study is for the critical assets, but you know, the critical assets almost become useless if our residential areas are flooded and and unusable.
That's a great question, but unfortunately, this program. Is based for the cities and the critical assets. And uh residential or private uh properties, they are not part. Of this study. So probably you need to coordinate with Miami-Dade County, which they do. And uh but this program is very, very specific with that. It's a template that you have all the cities in the state of Florida. And like Terry said, the goal is by the year twenty twenty five. Have all the city, that's one of the liberals that we have. So all the critical assets, they're in a database where we had to send it to Tallahassee. So by the year twenty twenty five, the whole goal is to have the whole state of Florida with a database, identify what are all the critical asset. And then come what are the different alternatives that they have. Okay, and this is, I think this is the last year uh that it will come, this program started July first. They have like Terry says, they promised two hundred seventy five million dollars. Under the program, I think it's go, it's already passed the legislature, where you have about twenty five million dollars for planning and two hundred and fifty for construction projects. And that probably will try to kind of identify and see what can apply uh for this funding, SICO, because it's money. Uh, this one you have to see zero tax, I mean, not to the city. It was all funded by the state. Because that's the whole goal is to have the whole state of Florida under this program. But that's, I'm I'm sorry, but it doesn't include the residential. Uh, it's, I I need to focus, we need to focus on on the critical assets. And there is an area close like next to the golf course, which is really flooding, but we cannot consider that one. I'm I'm sorry.
And I guess maybe. In a roundabout way, what I'm asking is for some of the protecting our critical assets, if we find a way to, instead of, let's use city hall. It's a good example. It's an older building. I don't see how it's possible for us to raise it. So the only thing I can imagine in order to keep it um would be to. Um, improve the flood control around it, right?
Correct.
Pump stations or something. So that in itself, if we're doing that, we're protecting areas. Around it.
Correct. All we have with Melrose, with the Melrose Canal. If you and we harden the explanation, you definitely improve both.
The residents.
Yes.
So in a way, and correct me if I'm, I'm just trying to to visualize all this because our critical assets are pretty much spaced, if we consider the golf course, Stafford Park. The senior center and this, they're pretty much spaced, not in one central location like downtown that. Benefits us because hopefully as we improve.
You you're.
Unless we're going to raise these things, I can't imagine how we would raise Stafford. Yeah, I mean, I guess we could. Build, put more dirt there or something, but for the most part, improving the drainage. And the flooding would be the way to go to maintain our buildings and that should help. So perhaps if we can expand.
Proven Stafford Park and Raggin Park, so all the residential area around Stafford Park, they will have an improvement. Absolutely. But for the ground, I we can don't, we need to focus on a Stafford Park because Stafford Park is a critical asset. But yeah, you're you're absolutely right. If we improve the critical assets, it will, you will, it will also include a residential life that is tied to the. a residential life that is tied to the critical asset. Yeah.
Thank you for doing, I know this is a lot of work and it's a very complex process of, and thank you very much. No, I know.
I live for these staff. So, and I'm sorry, my bit too technical because a lot of people complain that I'm too technical. So.
No, I, I think it's, you know.
I'll try to do my best to keep it.
And, and it's wonderful that, you know, our small city is moving ahead with this, you know, quickly. And, but I wanted to also ask you, and I guess one of the things, I don't know if you can answer this, but as other cities with this, the C six canal that we're using that as our main flood control, as other cities say, Hialeah, does Doral use that? They don't rely on that.
Doral, yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah.
So they, as they improve their flood control and stuff, I mean, that water, water doesn't know the difference between boundaries and stuff. It's all flowing in one direction. So that's going to increase the blood, the water volume.
No, it's not that easy. It's very complicated. The problem with Doral that they're overbuilt. They get rid of a lot of golf courses that were impervious. And now it's all pervious, impervious, I'm sorry. Because you have downtown Doral where they have 170 acres. And the problem with Doral is that they don't have conveyance because you only have two canals and you don't have enough conveyance going through. So I.
So I guess that's what I'm saying is that the complexity of this is as other cities do what they need to do to protect their cities, you know, water is only going to be going into the same place. And you know, so it's important that we move quickly on this and you know, quickly, obviously rationally and you know, but you know, take this seriously because it seems like, you know, we're still talking, you know, 2040 or, or 2070. And the other thing I wanted.
Ju- ju- just wanted to mention because it is a, a, a complex, but, but coordinated effort. And so what you're saying is, 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 is correct. That is why the state is requiring that everybody does it because it, it, it just adds to the mix. And so as surrounding cities do the same, it, it adds to the, to the protection or to the. So, so what you're saying is, is, is correct. It's, it's not an isolated instance. But as everyone starts to, and in, in their own situation, but as everybody starts to improve their critical assets and their infrastructure, it adds to the protection of the entire area. And so that's part of the program.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I guess the last thing, and then I'll let anybody else in council that has, we're going to be working on our strategic plan this week.
Wednesday.
Okay. So as far as preparing the adaptation plan, and I know we're still ways off. Do you have any suggestions as to how, and, and I don't want to put you on the spot right now to tell us, but that's probably something if you could maybe make the recommendation to Tammy as to for our strategic plan, because it's obviously something that we need to start, we need to put in there too of, you know, in three years, five years, whatever, depending on the grant.
That would be the end of the report. That would be our recommendations. Yeah. Well, we have, we identified now that we have the focus areas. We have to see what are we going to do for each. It was some will be different. Like you have the golf course might be different that you have a Stafford Park. One half of a pump station, there might have all, all like the canal might have to, we don't know yet. That's why, but yeah, that at the end, when I see you, hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have an adaptation action plan and we'll have a recommendation on things that you can implement it. So you can consider when you plan your 20, 25 or 50 year plan and trying to get. One thing I need to be very honest, this study does not include any funding on cost. Because specifically it's not, it's not funded by the state. So that's one thing that I cannot include. That's something that we had to do it outside. But funding is not part of the grant. So it's only the stock when you have the adaptation action plan. I, I did that too before, and that's the first thing they asked and say, well, how much is going to cost me? And who's going to pay for it? And unfortunately I would not have those answers at this stage.
Mayor, the.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Can I ask about the, the stormwater pump project and Tammy, the one that's on Oakwood? That's still, what's the status of that?
We're still in Ocona silence for it.
Okay. But that's a step in the right direction, right? Cause the Oakwood is right there.
We're having, we're having tomorrow at two o'clock, we have a meeting to select the CEI. And we have the.
Three, three consultants.
Yeah, we have three consultants. They are very good. We have six. They're very, very good. So I don't, we don't know.
But that project is addressing that area of Stafford and Reagan, right? Cause it's right there on Oakwood.
Yeah. And that's, that's a good point. Yes. Because actually that section is also considered on Miami Dade County. And they, they were not aware that we were doing a Stafford Park. So I already told them. So they already have that's, that area in their project in Miami Dade County. So there is a lot of, this, this, this report is good. So we can start coordinating with Miami Dade County is doing.
Right.
So that is moving forward and hopefully we'll have construction in the next couple of months.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I like the technical reports. I, I really appreciate that. I, it's an excellent presentation. I would like for us to, you know, get a sense of what the county is doing or not doing, or you know, where we are with that. I appreciate hearing that the other cities are, are working on similar plans because I had that same concern. I just happened to be at a doctor's appointment in that heart of Doral. And, and yes, they just keep building and building and, and yeah, it creates some, some issues for us. So I think in our strategic plan discussions, we need to amplify this. And I was going to ask about Stafford Park. So good. Glad to see that that's moving in the right direction. But thank you.
Thank you. And we'll give Tammy, this presentation is going to be available at your website to all the local residents to see, we're more than welcome to give the input. We want that.
Yes.
Okay. I don't want to go at the end and they start, and this is a planning tool. It's nothing, this is something that is, you can get that information. And what you're planning for the next 20, 25 years, those are things that you need to consider for planning. So we welcome, and I'll give the presentation to Tammy and probably we give like one month or two months. If they have any questions or issues, they're more than welcome to have it. And actually that's part of the deliverables that I have with FDP. So we need to get the local input from residents and get their complaints or no complaints. I don't know. Okay.
Any other questions? Jose, when, when you're saying, let me just ask you, when you're saying preparing the strategic, the adaptation plan.
Yes.
Can you briefly tell us what that means?
Yes, I can. Actually I'm working on that. Basically with adaptation plan is we, the way I see it have a small scaffold, it's more like a buffet. You have different alternatives. You have raise the roads, for example, relocate, raise, put a seawall, do several things. So they have a, a group and then you pick the one that you want for your focus area. What applies for one, it might not be a plan for another one. If you take, for example, city hall, this area. It might, might not have be any solution. You might have to put a pump station like Miami Beach is doing. You go to Miami Beach or you might have to relocate. So there is no point. And so what we have with adaptation plan, we will have with different alternatives. And we'll, we identify what is done, what it will be good for each focus area. That's what we're trying to do.
And, but how far, and again, I'm trying to think for when we do this planning, how far do we need to say? Is this in five years? The, right now, the, the, this that you're doing is so that we can apply for future?
Yeah.
Grants, correct? That we have to do this part of it in order to be able to apply for future resiliency.
Correct. Correct.
So if, so this helps us apply for future grants, but just to get an idea of like, when should we be planning for this? Are we talking in, I mean, you're saying 2040. But by then we have to be prepared for it.
Okay.
So we're saying 10 years?
Yeah, that's personally me. I think there are things that you can do now, be prepared. And you don't have to wait 20 years. If you know that area is going to flood, like it happened, you can act right now. And there are things that might not be that much, probably planet, I would say 10 years, 25 and long term. So probably do like a, a short term and long term, but things, things that you can do right now. And take advantage because there will be funding. We don't know how much, for how long is going to be the funding. We know that you have it 2024, 2025. So take advantage of that. And, and that will be like short term, things that we can do it right now, that you know, you had to do it no matter what. Okay. Like typical, all good drive. You know, it's flooding. So you can act that. You don't have to wait 20 years to, to do it now. So that's things that you can do it right now.
And I think with those things, we've been asking for state appropriations for them. So, but this is actually grants for resiliency grants that we could be asking for that aren't really state appropriations. And perhaps we can combine the two. I'm thinking the, the canal, I don't even know what we call it anymore, canal erosion. We have to come up with a new name.
We.
We've, and yeah, you know, with the canal and bank.
Yeah, we try.
Correct. So we have to think of a new name somehow because obviously the canals keep, you know, as water drains into those canals, the Melrose and Esplanade, that eats away at the road and the roads are eventually going to be an issue.
Right.
Because you know, the roads will be destabilized if you keep allowing. So we have to, and we keep not getting the state appropriations for that. But I mean, to me, that's pretty critical because you know, the roadway is right next to it.
I think that probably my mistake, our mistake is we send that project as only as bank stabilization. And that was it. This one we're going to be more than bank stabilization. Yes, it's bank stabilization, but it's hardening. It's getting going one foot or two foot above that elevation, that flood elevations. And that's what, that's what we're going.
Okay.
It's the same thing, but it's going to be better. We're going to do the bank stabilization. We're going to improve for sea level rise. And that's where the way we will be presenting the summit upcoming July 1st. And hopefully we'll get funding. I don't know. Well, we'll see.
If you don't take care of it now, it's going to eventually hurt the roads and then it's going to be a much major project.
Probably you get funding through the state. Well, one will have another, or if we have a, a damage assessment, I don't know. What would another will get funding for the project? Don't worry.
Through the chair.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I, on, on this point, I, I think it's, you know, we, we know how much the seawater is rising. And you know, what it is, you know, between three to four and a half years. So for our purposes, our conversation, we should, that should be something that we should be including. In other words, our projections, five years, 10 years.
Yeah.
We already have the 30 year projections. So.
And by the way, the 100 year flood isn't necessarily every 100 year. You can have a 100 year flood every year.
Look at what's happening for a lot.
Right?
We're living, I, I live in Fort Lauderdale and it was, it was a disaster. We have 20, it was one in a thousand years. We had 20 inches array in, in one day. And what happened, if you're looking, it's happened everywhere. It just happened in Texas last week. It happened in Mississippi and that's, Terry, it was saying that the tendency is right now with climate change and sea level rise and whatever, is that you have very localized storm events for a long period of time and very, and, and harder, more intense. And that's what happened. So it's happened everywhere and even in the United States, it's happened all over the world. And so that's, so far we are lucky that nothing happened in Miami Dade.
Hurricane Maria sat over Puerto Rico for 24 hours, more or less.
Correct. And that's what it happened. Then it stays there and it stays there. And that was happening for a, it didn't move. It started raining at two o'clock. It was eight o'clock and it was raining nonstop. It was amazing. Okay. So, well, thank you very much. Any input or everything, please. I'll suggest give it to Tammy. I'd love to include in the report.
One last thing, I just want you to introduce your other team member back there. He's not sitting up front with you. Guillermo.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Alejandro, yes.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for being here.
My right hand. He's the one that's doing everything. I just take the credit. He does all the work and I take the credit. And the one that gives money is cheap. So.
Tara, thank you all.
And we have one of the partners of the company, Alfredo Sanchez.
Hi.
He's a proud resident of Miami Springs.
Oh, so good. Thank you. That's wonderful. I, I wanted to say, um, your firm DNA have been just the work that you've done in the city, um, you know, is exceptional always with the design of the senior center and the aquatic center and so many things that they've done, um, that, and this is, um, a major, major.
We have a lot of things going on now with Sariaponciana, which should be done in a couple of months. Hopefully by September. So you will have the medium with the nice trees and everything. Uh, September, mid-September, not that many, September 15th. Yeah. We have a deadline. Then you have all good, we start, then we have Kusquare and then we have Sa Drive that should be coming next. And for you, we have enough money to do everything. So that's good. That's a good news.
Good, good.
Okay.
I have one last quick question. As far as our proximity to the airport, Tara, maybe answer this. Does that help us or hurt us as far as with the flood control with this, you know, I, because obvious, it seems to me like airports are always, you know, one of the priorities and getting a city back and running after say a 100 year flood or, you know, major water event like Fort Lauderdale had now. Do you think we're helped by that or hurt?
Your, your, your proximity to it, absolutely. That's, that's a, that's a major, major asset of the entire county. So your proximity to it, you're going to be benefiting by any, any measures that are taking.
Good. Good.
And, and the fire station that is Miami Dade County Fire Station that just happens to be in our building is another asset that the county should be working on. So.
Hopefully they are. Okay.
I'm, I'm open. Any question or anything that you have, I'm open to 24/7. Just go with Tammy. And I can, I can get back to you.
Thank you.
Right away. Okay.
And I think it's really important for you as the council to encourage your residents to look and leave comments or ask questions because that's obviously what, what they look for in, in those reports also.
Yeah.
That's a big piece of it.
We don't know, we don't want to work in. In isolation.
Right, right.
Uh, we want the input of everyone. I don't want to come to November and start people complaining. So. Okay, okay.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Thank you to all of your team for being here and for an excellent presentation. Okay. So we move to, I, Suzanne's not here. We're going to 12A. I'm going to ask to defer that to June 29th because she couldn't be here tonight for the women's club. Um, and we'll move to 12B, a request by Vice Mayor Centine.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm a little bit concerned with the timetable that we have to make a decision. Obviously this is a very important decision. So not to downgrade that part. But I think I'm also concerned because we're going through this whole process. And to wait to the end of July to make a decision could also, you know, for circumstances that we don't know, we can't control that candidates, all candidates could be seeking other jobs. And, and if they were to find something that they find to be better at that point, it might be, you know, in a situation where we have to start from scratch. So I was just saying that there's possibilities of different dates that we can do it a little bit closer to. I know that it's, it's a, it's a big decision. So to do it that night, I'm in agreement, mayor, that probably not. Not, exactly. So, but you know, is there other dates that we could do to kind of speed that up a little bit? Only because I think a whole month from there, it's possible that that could happen.
I mean, my understanding is that the, the millage cap setting meeting is the first meeting in July, right? Because we don't have a, a meeting.
Well, and, and that Chris, you couldn't move the meeting up, but, but we don't have to have the millage cap meeting is a few moments. Right. It's a five minute meeting. So we just said to add that, I mean, we could possibly just have a city, a special meeting for this in.
Um, I know I had some, I was looking at everyone's schedules.
I know. It's July is when we don't move.
I know. So I kind of narrowed it down to the week of July 10th. And that's approximately two weeks after, unless you want something sooner, that's something that we might have to revisit. But I was looking at July 10th to possibly having a special meeting. It could be an early meeting. That way it doesn't interfere with the rest of your, your day. Um, so I, I don't know what your thoughts are on that. So I was looking at the week of the 10th, the 10th possibly being, um, a viable date for everybody.
Through the chair. Yes. Um, I can't remember if, you know, we have a.
a requirement to do a village meeting on a certain week of the.
It's that Chris.
We can't, we can't bump up the village.
Right, because we're like all scattered, I mean, I don't know.
Well, normally we don't meet in July except for the village cap meeting, which is usually like the third week of July. And so we said to move this, but if if everyone, I don't have a problem with moving it up. A week or two if we're all available to, I certainly, I, there's no way I'll be able to make a decision that night, you know.
That's not something that we knew we should rush.
And and that we should rush, but the most that we would be moving it up.
Is a week.
Is a week, really.
July twentieth, they were supposed to.
So so the special meeting, the village setting meeting is July nineteenth.
And there's an issue with with one of, right, at all, and that I believe would also be. If we didn't have that extra meeting between the twenty ninth and the nineteen, he would not be able to vote on the next city manager at that point. So just trying to accommodate, again, the the schedules, we could move it back to the twentieth, not here in chambers since we have the red light hearing camera.
Or the twentieth, the.
Well, it was originally the twentieth, that Thursday, red light hearing camera has already sent out subpoenas. I I thought it was something that we could move or postpone to a later time, but it's not, so we moved it to the nineteenth. And and Councilman Vasquez is not available that day, so if we move it back to the twentieth, we can have the meeting either at the Rebecca Sosa. Theater or even at the Adult Community Center, which I need to confirm with Tammy to see the availability.
Talking about the village.
The village, yes, village meeting.
In combination.
Well, let's do the village first because that we need to for sure. And Chris, you said you were not gonna have it ready till, you normally it's that third week of July, I mean, that's, I don't want to rush you to.
That's much time, yeah.
I, so let's do, right, the third week, let's do it like we've always done it, third week of July, so that, let's. Okay, so if Councilman Vasquez, you're not available on the nineteenth.
I'm available on the twentieth.
Twentieth, okay, is everyone else on the available on the twentieth for the village, let's just do that right now.
Everybody was available on the twentieth.
Okay.
Originally, so assuming that everyone still is, just the venue would change at this point.
So we can do that and we'll change, we'll let you pick the venue, if that's okay with everyone, let's get the village done because then we need to make sure, pardon me.
I'll do it on Zoom.
You can do it on Zoom.
Yes.
Through the chair, I'm a little bit confused.
Wait one second, the village can be on Zoom, George, Roger.
So as long as there's a in person.
Okay.
You may participate on Zoom, as long as the council.
As remember, I need three, three.
Person.
In person.
And he can vote on and Councilman Vasquez can vote by Zoom. Okay, so is everyone okay with the village cap meeting, which is a very short meeting? We just agree on that the village won't exceed a certain level and then we have the workshops to hopefully lower it from there. For the twentieth?
Yes.
Okay, it's six.
Um, it's at five oh one.
Five, okay, five is okay, I mean, is that all right with everyone?
We're changing it because Vasquez is not.
No, no, just clarify.
Right.
When when we were kicking around dates and 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 Erica was calling us, I said, I'm gonna be out of town. But July twentieth, I am available, nineteenth, I'm not because of family thing we have, but the twentieth, I'm available. So that when I saw the nineteenth, I called her and she said, well, we got this, let's discuss it tonight.
Okay, so let's do the twentieth at five P M, if that's good with everyone.
Yes.
Get that out of the way. Okay, now the option would be for the to select our city manager, we could have it on that night, the twentieth. And that would add, you know, would just continue the meeting and add that. Or what Council Vice Mayor Centine is requesting is to move it up a week.
I, right, mayor, I feel like if we do it on the twentieth, we picked the city manager in six weeks. I mean, I don't, I don't think we, I think as far as that process goes, that that seems pretty expedited to me. I don't, I mean. I I I think that we're not dragging our feet and I think that picking a city manager within six weeks of of.
Well, and and to.
Previous manager stepping down, I don't think is unreasonable, I think if.
So just as a reminder, when you appoint somebody on the twentieth, you still need to negotiate a contract with the individual. So you're gonna need another, what is that, another, the next meeting would be August fourteenth.
Correct.
So if we added that extra meeting on the on the tenth, you can essentially appoint somebody and then negotiate between those two weeks. From the tenth to the twentieth and already approve a contract at that point.
Yeah, I mean, I I understand, I understand we'd be, we'd, everything would be a week earlier, right? But the the point is that I think that what the Vice Mayor was saying is that one of the four candidates is gonna like say like, I'm not gonna wait an extra week, I just.
Well, I mean, to that point, you know, even if they were to accept the job, if something better comes along and they want to move, there's nothing, you know.
There's nothing.
You know, some, I.
We could select them and they could leave, that that happens a lot in this business, I've I've come to learn that.
Yes, so you know, I was interviewing for other jobs and something else.
I mean, I know it's gonna take some time to, you know, to negotiate the contract and get them, but we've got an interim city manager in 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 the in the meantime. If if we let the candidates know by the twentieth that that's when they're gonna, I, again, I don't think that that's unreasonable. And and you know, and the other thing is that we're gonna meet every single week in August, I mean, that's that's how this works, right? We get, we do the village cap in July and July is when everybody kind of has their their.
Yes, but we're not really supposed to vote at workshops, right?
We would have to have hold.
A special meeting, we could hold special council meeting as a part of the workshop or before or after the workshop.
Afterwards.
Okay, all right, okay. So then our first meeting would be.
In August is the fourteenth, the workshop is the seventh.
The seventh.
It's like two weekend increments at at this point, yeah, so we'd be going from the.
When twenty eighth. Can I, can I ask clarification? What are we, what are we selecting now? Because I heard July tenth.
Yeah, we're deciding on whether or not to.
Not a good one for me, I'm traveling between ninth and tenth.
I I say we leave it, we leave it with the village cap meeting on the twentieth or.
Councilman Vasquez, you're not available that week of.
Well, the tenth is, I'm traveling between the ninth and the tenth, we're gonna be away, so.
Well, I just offered the tenth.
No, 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 I understand.
Okay, like the week of the tenth possibly.
I was, I was good with the, you know, the.
With the twenty.
The the twentieth, you know, we can be, you know, later meeting, that's fine, but if we need to do it another date, then to me, it has to be after that day.
Mayor, I say we leave it for the the twentieth, do it along with the village cap meeting right after and.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, we don't need a motion for this date while we're deciding as a date, right? So right now we have it on the twentieth, if we do it beside on the twentieth, then you start negotiating the contract. We have to approve the contract.
On the August fourteenth meeting.
August fourteenth meeting, but we could do it on the August seventh meeting.
As a special meeting.
As a special meeting.
As a special meeting before the workshop. Either before the workshop, yeah.
Right, so that wouldn't delay.
Workshop starts at six, so you can.
I think that's.
Okay.
So keep it at July twentieth as we.
Okay. Vice Mayor, I know you.
Well, the consensus is. To change, but obviously I wanted to change it for a reason, but that's why we're here, we gather to vote, that's.
It doesn't.
Little choice to get going.
And we're really, we're talking about if you're gonna be out the ninth and the tenth, we're really talking about a matter of few days difference. All right, so let's just leave it for July twentieth now.
Okay.
Places to be determined.
Right.
Still.
Tentatively, it's at the Rebecca Sosa, just for audio visual facility, so it's it's most likely it will be there.
They have school.
They do.
Okay.
Because the only difference would be moving it up to the thirteenth, we still wouldn't meet until we have a council meeting in August. Unless we negotiate, but it takes, how long does it take to negotiate a contract? I'm guessing that, what do you need for that? A few weeks, I mean, I don't know, Roger, how does that work?
So the way this process is gonna work is the council's gonna meet on the twentieth, right? To appoint, select the manager, you guys are going to then select amongst yourselves someone to negotiate the agreement, typically that'll be the mayor. But the negotiation period doesn't really have a set amount of time, I mean, you could negotiate the contract in a day hypothetically. But you know, it will, it will take some time to negotiate it. I can get historical information on how long the managers' negotiations have taken and get back to you if that.
Is that usually a week or two?
Okay, I I would suggest that it will take about two weeks.
About two weeks.
Just from what I've seen.
Let's do this, let's leave it for the twentieth right now, at the next meeting, which is June twenty nine. If anything comes up, we find out that the negotiation's gonna be faster, slower, whatever, we can always revisit this, how does that sound?
Fair enough.
But we'll leave it for the twentieth, what we decided on for right now, okay. All right, um.
Just a question, just for the record, I mean, it's curiosity, I mean, the week of the twenty fourth of July is not a good week for someone, some of you.
The last week of July is not good for me.
Okay.
Um, okay, so let's go to the reports and recommendations, our city attorney, Roger.
Good evening, Council Mayor, I don't have anything legal to report, but I do want to report that Heidi's baby boy was born and very healthy, she's recovering.
Oh, wonderful.
That's always nice to see.
They were our best, very excited about their growing family. Okay, and our city manager, Tammy?
Yes, so I just wanted to give a quick update to the One Curtis Parkway Town Center. I did send out an email to each and every one of you, but just just in brief. The town center officially pulled their building permit on July twenty twenty one. So this July of twenty twenty three will make exactly two years for the building building and the construction to be erected in that area. On June twenty of twenty one, they did request a street closure on Canal Street, which was part of their site plan and the project as a whole. To make some very important improvements to the stormwater of that area and drainage. We were just talking about that earlier, so that would be a great asset for that area to have those stormwater improvements. And just wanted to, you know, remind everybody that, you know, each time that an inspection was called, that it did allow for the building permit to be extended for a period of time. So they are still in in that permitted period in which they are allowed to be under construction. And and I just wanted to also give a an update that we're all hopefully expecting to hear, which the Canal Street is tentatively going to be opened now within the next two weeks. As you see, they're doing some milling and paving over there, so they should be able to do the milling, paving and striping of the of the roadway. And they should be finished within the next two, two, two and a half weeks now, so. So that was that update, I wanted to also introduce two wonderful people in the audience. They are, I think most of you have already met them, I have Alex David and Sylvia Vargas. They are with Calvin Giordano and Associates and they are working very diligently with us to get caught up to speed on all of the city's planning needs. And we have bombarded them with with emails and information and strategic plans and the bed tax, you know, information and Northwest Thirty Sixth Street and the task force recommendations. So they've been really hitting the ground hard, they are in the city every Wednesday. This past, last week, Wednesday, Alex was in the city for us, speaking to residents already from ninety two. This week Sylvia has the pleasure of being in the city with us. She's going to be not only in the city for the for the day, but then she will also be at our, I don't know if you both are gonna attend the workshop. Okay, so they will both be at the workshop that evening, just to kind of hear what's going on as far as the city and our progression to move forward. So last but not least, I just wanted to name a couple of events. We do have the food drive distribution that is happening Friday, June twenty third at nine A M. It's first come, first served, supplies last at the Lions Club located on three oh one Swallow. I just wanted to make everyone aware that the Miami Springs Aquatic Center has their summer hours, so just make note of those summer hours. Make sure, I know that mayor, you have emphasized on several occasions that every child in at least South Florida should know how to swim. So it's important that we do have swim lessons going on now, so I think, you know, residents should be made aware that they have the opportunity to have their children in swim lessons and adults, if they don't know how to swim and the pool is heated, so that's a nice positive. And just to announce that Stafford Park, the the closure for the summer season, just so that the greens can rejuvenate and some general maintenance. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, let's start with the city council and Councilman Vasquez, we'll start this side first.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Councilman Pat.
Okay, I had a quick question and I'm sorry because it just struck me that this is the last time we're gonna be meeting, we won't meet again.
June twenty nine.
Yeah, but we won't be meeting again before July fourth. And Tammy, and we we had said that we were gonna add, we were gonna, your, I think staff was gonna consult with with Omar to see if, since we weren't doing the fireworks, if we were gonna do some kind of little extra event, something, do you know if anything?
So as far as the Fourth of July, we are, he did add some extra events to the luau. Let me see, there are some extra events that are happening at the pool, I don't have those pulled up right now, but then he also did add some extra events throughout the year. Going back to school, I you, I don't know if you all know of the new requirement that you have to have the see-through book bags now. I I think that we're gonna do it here at Miami Springs, so we're going to offer those book bags as well along. So Omar is going to add that to the program, so we're going to give out some some book bags. And there's some other events that we have added, I can certainly share that with with you, Omar has been updating it.
Are those on our website, the on social media, whatever events we have, I know I I saw on our social media, the, you know, the parade. And the pool activity, so let's just make sure whatever for Fourth of July, that we have everything there.
Yeah, the pre-sales for the Fourth of July are are going on now and they'll be available through May ninth for the pool party for the Fourth of July. We also have the parade itself, where we have invited commissioner and and representatives and 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 so on. And then I think we chose Mr. Ken Wild as the grand marshal and he has accepted. And then also we have the just the Miami Springs luau on July twenty third from twelve to five P M. So those we are accepting pre-sale tickets right now.
Okay, I, so let me, so I, this seat has a vacancy in the ecology advisory board and I reached out to two people that I thought would be qualified for it, but they were unwilling, so I'm opening it, opening it up to my peers, if you guys know of anybody who you think would do a good job of serving on the ecology advisory board and are willing, I'd be happy to reach out to them if you give me their name, I'd be happy to reach out to them.
Well, I also have a seat, I have to sign, I talked to Mary Jo and she is talking to somebody else that might be able to.
All right.
Yeah, just to let you know if she says that she's gonna do it and then whoever.
Yeah.
She's had some contact with that is has interest.
Would appreciate that. And then lastly, just in preparation for Wednesday, I know we're all looking forward to it. It just, it strikes me that the structure of our strategic plan, that is 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 several years old, I feel like we can get a lot done on Wednesday if we all come prepared and if we focus on. we can get a lot done on Wednesday if we all come prepared, and if we focus on the, the goals and the objectives. I feel like as uh, with our meeting that we had with the interim city attorney, uh, the strategies and the, the key performance indicators tend to be things that are very specific to when this plan was written back in two thousand fourteen. And I feel like if we uh, come to this meeting prepared to really look at the goals uh, and the objectives and what we wanna add, uh, obviously, and you know, proceed that with just uh, going over the mission and vision, make sure that we're all on the same page. Uh, it strikes me that uh, that the strategies and key performance indicators portion of this is something that maybe uh, once we've determined the goals and objectives, if we're all on the same page, that city staff could come back with, with recommendations for strategies and initiatives and key performance indicators. I just, I worry that Wednesday, we, we might get kind of stuck in the weeds if we, if we get, cause this kinda goes from general to specific. If we get into the specifics of, of what the status of things are that were specific back in two thousand fourteen, I feel like we're not gonna get very far into this. Uh, so I just, I intend to come prepared. Um, but I, I feel like the, the mission and vision, the goals and the objectives for each one of these uh, strategic areas, I think i- if we can, if we can get some consensus on that, I think that would really set us on our way to then kinda take each one, have staff make recommendations for uh, strategies and initiatives and key performance indicators. And then this could be something that, that we look at in a yearly basis like we do with our goals workshops, I think that uh, and then I think, once we've done this kind of revamp of it, like updating it won't be so difficult. So just throwing that out there, that, that I'd like for it to be a productive meeting, and I'm gonna come prepared and I'm gonna be kinda thinking at the global level uh, in terms of mission, vision and goals and objectives. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could, cause I hadn't thought about this, but when he mentioned it, is something that I had a conversation with uh, with Tammy about, and that, you know, uh, we, I use and a lot of people use the acronym SMART for goals, right? Specific, measurable, attainable, reasonable and timely. And just to kinda help us when we're trying to put together the verbiage for goals. Yep, to kinda follow that kinda format.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Br- Bravo?
Um, no, I, I will be ready for the strategic meeting for sure. I will have all of my notes. I will be as thorough and direct as possible. Um, I agree with Walter. Um, as far as the ecology board, I think, I'm not sure if I have someone to appoint, but Erica, can you explain to me what, what happens? I just wanna understand what happens if we just can't fill the seats on the ecology board? Wha- what, well, some, some sort of dormancy or like, you know, what, what, what? What are we up against? Are we doing something?
Currently, the board um, cannot meet because we do not have quorum. We only have two members um, appointed. So currently there, it's stagnant, um. So unless, you know, members are appointed, I mean, there's really not much that the board can do moving forward without members. I mean, we need a quorum to meet.
No, I, I understand that, but what if we just, you know, we just don't have anybody to appoint, or nobody just doesn't have interest?
I mean, it's up to the council whether or not to, I mean, I'm not sure if that's a board to, that you can sunset.
What we've been doing, yes, is if a count, if a board doesn't meet, is we've been um, you know, for whatever reason. Right, they just, you know, we just continue the board, because look, we've got fourteen thousand residents. If we can't fill an advisory board position for one of our boards, um, you know, there's only so much, you know, humanly possible that we can do, and, and it's not just fill it one time. It's making the commitment, which is, you know, I think what we've discussed recently, it's not saying this person is on the board, it's making sure that they can meet. Because there's a responsibility, if you're on the board, that you can meet on the day that it's designed to meet. And our city clerks shouldn't be the ones trying to juggle, they, they have enough to do juggling our schedule when we're not meeting regularly and, you know, trying to figure out when each of us, but the, the boards are set to meet a certain day. So ultimately, um, I do have, by coincidence, today, and I sent it to, to Erica, is somebody in our community that said that they, cause I've been telling them, you know, we have trouble appointing people to the boards, and then them making the commitment to really be.
Maintaining it.
Maintaining it, because it's, it's a commitment. Um, and I do have, Erica, I think I sent you that email today, right?
Ms. Walton, yes.
Yes, of someone that, you know, said that uh, she's been talking to residents, and that she wanted to find out what vacancies were available, because she might have some, I don't know the details of it, but I asked her to get in touch with Erica and find out, so there may be some people um, coming. I would like to suggest to all our residents, you know, if you're listening and you know of someone who might be interested in um, you know, in serving in, in one of our advisory boards, and you can get the list of the boards, well, they're posted on our website. You can also call Erica in our city clerk's office, eight oh five, three oh five, eight oh five, five oh oh six. Okay. And she'll read off the list, um, but the advise, the purpose of the advisory boards is to have that connection with our residents of giving us input on, you know, uh, things that, you know, on certain topics, and if we can't fill them, then there's really, really no reason to have the board.
No, I know, I just, I, I, I'm always stressing because it comes up, and then I can't find somebody, it was just, we have so much going on that it, for me to recruit somebody, and I, it's a very nichey board. So I, I would like the help of maybe, again, advertising it through our social media platform and see if we get a better outreach there.
We, we do campaigns.
And, and it may be that the name is, and I know years ago, we talked about changing the name from ecology's kind of a dated term. You know, now it's more sustainability or resiliency or environmental awareness boards, you know, there's probably, and that might be part of the deterrent is, you know, ecology just seems kind of, um, conservation is a term that we used to use a lot, and those are kind of dated terms now, so. Um, but let's see with these, we'll advertise it again. Um, I think there's, there's several boards that we have uh, vacancies on, and the historic preservation board is one that I know Jim showed up, but several of their members are not doing, are ill, I believe, so um. Um, and you know, it's funny, because Alex, I think you're in the, the audience, and I think you asked me that when we were talking about our, our city boards, and you asked about the demographics of, you know, is it older residents that tend to serve on the boards, and it's true. Um, for some reason, the younger residents are not, you know, that interested in, in serving on boards and, and, you know, that's probably on us, that we need to, to make a better effort of, and I'm talking younger, I don't mean youths, I mean.
Yeah.
Younger adults of reaching out to them and, and getting them on board to serve, because it's um, it's a really important way to, to get to know about our city and to have input and bring us recommendations. We're always open to input on, you know, how we can make things better for the city.
And then last but not least, I really, really wanna show um, appreciation to Ernie Aloma. I know who you, I know who you are. And I just, I wanna, I just wanna say thank you for serving our city for fourteen years. Um, we don't have anything ready for you today. I didn't expect you to come. Okay, so I just, I want you to know that you're very, very important to us. I appreciate you, I appreciate your service, I appreciate your time, and um, hopefully you'd be willing to serve us again in the future. I know, as you said, it's a thankless job. As you can see, it's hard for us to fill, but that was a, it's a very, very important board, and you're a very important person, and I respect you and I respect your um, your ability to serve us the way that you did. Absolutely, I mean, I, I don't know, Mayor. I just wanted to show.
It's not public, well, go ahead.
No, I mean, obviously, it's, it's kinda what I'm wanting, but I'm sitting here, and I hear you guys how troubling it is to find board members. But I think the important thing is to, you know, there's regulations and you're well, well within your rights to replace board members whenever you want. But I think at some point, you have to at least, I mean, I served on this board for fourteen years, and I didn't even get a chance to say goodbye to my fellow board members. I think that's just a level of decency that should be afforded to anybody who serves. So needless to say, it's hard to get people to get involved in the city. However, what do you think if people ask me, knowing that I've served for fourteen years, what do you think I'm gonna? I'm gonna say, you know, be careful what you wish for, because, you know, it, it, it went down so weird. I mean, honestly, to find out that the person who is replacing was actually notified two weeks before I was even told.
I don't know anything about this, I'm sorry, so, I don't even know. So it's lost on us.
That, at the very least, I mean, I served on this board, I love these members, I have come to the uh, to the meeting to give you a preview, or not a preview, but uh, you know, sort of an update. At the very least, I would have loved to sit there and address my fellow members and say, hey, thank you.
Okay, well, I think we'll have to get some background, cause we really don't know what the background is.
Without knowing, I was sort of shocked.
Okay, let's make sure.
Wanted to serve, I continued to want to serve, it was a shock to me that I was.
Because you're timed out or some, somebody?
But I was timed out five and a half years ago.
Okay.
You know, so, but my point is that, you know, as far as what I've heard here, as a resident, I don't know, do I? I mean, is it, is it okay to talk now?
No, it's really not. It's, you know what, thank you. It's, we just, a few moments, because the councilwoman asked you to say something, but, and we don't know the, really the background of it, but I apologize if we need to make better communication and what, I, we don't even know what you're, what the situation you're talking about is, so. Um, so we'll make sure that if someone is leaving, at least they're timely notified. Well, you know, Erica, maybe you can fill us in later. Thank you, yes.
Just to, I, I, we've already taken care of that, so I've already addressed that situation.
Good, good, so, all right. Anything else, Councilman? All right, Vice Mayor.
Um, well, thank you, Tammy, for that update on the um, on the town center, because uh, you know, I, I think it's important, obviously, we're privy to a lot of this information. Uh, and I thought it was important to the public here, or out, and obviously, one of the biggest concerns is the uh, what's going on on the uh, Canal Street, and why is it taking so long? Why we, why don't we rush them, and, and she explained that there's a uh, they have one permit. They did for the whole project, obviously, in hindsight, it's twenty twenty. Uh, they should have done a building permit for both sides, the building and the roadway. Uh, uh, work, and then we wouldn't be in this situation. But it is what it is, and I think Roger, I'm not sure if Ed's here today, or he's.
So.
Things that we talked about, possibly correcting that and putting stuff implementing, and you'll come up with some ideas for us to discuss, so we can address this in the future projects, not necessarily anything that's happened already, but for future projects, I think we can handle it a lot better. Uh, you know, from an agreement, which we obviously have uh, stuff that we could put in there for liquidating damage, but you can help us a little bit better with that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, so if I'm understanding what you were sort of hinting at here is, uh, we were talking and in essence, our ordinance currently, as it's written, provides a general permitting procedure for when objects are placed in the right of way, but does not specifically address, okay, uh, road closures and the need to uh, permit road closures when there are improvements that are being made to that road. So for example, a- a- and Tammy mentioned it earlier, milling and paving of the road, an improvement, adding parking spaces, landscaping, stormwater. We, we, our ordinance was written a very long time ago and did not anticipate this road closure permitting process. Um, and, and I have my colleague Ed Marcos on to add anything um, to what I've just said, but if it's the will of the council, I think, and, and Vice Mayor was asking, or mentioned this earlier, perhaps it'd be good to revisit this ordinance, create, or not to create, but to revise the current per- permitting procedures, so that road closure permitting procedures are, are clearer moving forward.
Well, I think that this is something that.
Been put on the agenda for us to discuss.
I would say that this, this has to be like an agenda item or something. This is like, you know, we're way off topic here. So if that's something, I mean, honestly, Canal Street, no one's asked me about Canal Street, it's a little, you know, part of that. And, you know, the project itself going up, and you know, everyone's, you know, watching the project go up, but Canal Street itself, but I've had no one ask about that, it's, you know, like um, that little area that's closed off and, and that's being worked on. But nonetheless, if you feel that there's something, Councilman, for, you know, that we need to address going forward, then let's put it on the agenda for discussion.
Right.
As a specific thing, okay?
Fair enough.
And you work with the, the city attorney to discuss.
Oh, definitely. I guess you're luck, luckier than me to have no one to complain about that area, but.
Right.
It's all good. And I, I spoke to Roger about when you, when you guys send the, the steps, where we have those automated extensions of six weeks, every team, they just got a, an inspection. I think there's, there's definitely an item there to, to adjust for, for projects.
Okay, so let's do that as a agenda item. This is kind of, this ending thing is just kind of closing remarks on, um, so we're off topic here. Okay, anything else?
No, I just wanted the, the public to know what I heard.
Okay, um, and all I wanted to say is um, that I appreciate everything that our residents do for us. There's so many things that our residents do on an ongoing basis, and I know they reach out to all of us with issues, um, but they also reach out to us with suggestions and with things that we can improve, and you know, I just wanna let them know that um, we, you know, your input is very, very valuable to us. Not just your complaints, but also your, your ideas um, of how we can make the city um, better, because it's, it's all of us together that do this. And um, Alex and Sylvia, thank you so much for being here. We're really excited with your firm. The death and breath, like I said, of your firm, I think will be a very positive thing for our planning process. So thank you so much. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.